Is pleasing to you. And we'll be so grateful. We ask these blessings and all blessings in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. April Roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Board One, here. Jay Stapp, Board Two.
Here.
Carrie Roll, Board Three.
Here.
Counta Pudley, Board Four.
Here.
Gary Fox, Board Five.
Here.
Pat Ran, Board Six.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business tonight is the approval of our council meeting minutes from June the fifteenth. And council, you've had these well in advance and had an opportunity to look them over. Now would be the time to make any adjustments, if any, or needed. If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Council, I'm going to ask for there to be a motion to add two items to the agenda this evening.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items are added. Mr. Lovell, if you will handle these items for us.
I will. The first item to add is a resolution to approve a moratorium on specialty shops in the downtown business district for basically ninety days. The reason for this is basically that, as most of you know, we've had numerous requests for specialty shops recently, and, you know, we're creating different definitions for one type of business versus another type of business. And we just want to review our ordinances, compare with other jurisdictions, and come up with a uniformed definition for specialty shops for staff to enforce downtown. Because right now, we have basically different requirements for every store you walk into. And it's not workable for staff to continue to having to enforce matters like that. So I would recommend that that moratorium be approved by the council.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
The next item is, we have just completed an internal review of the city's adult entertainment ordinance, and realized that we did not have several things that are, have been updated by other communities, including the sale of adult instruments and devices, novelties and paraphernalia, to be regulated as part of your adult entertainment ordinance. What I would ask y'all to do is to pass a moratorium on us issuing any new permits related to those type of establishments under the adult entertainment ordinance, or any permits by the city in general for those types of establishments, for a period until September thirtieth of this year, during which time, myself, Chief Police, and Mr. Menino's Department will be getting together and revising our adult entertainment ordinance to include these and other revisions as well. This moratorium is recommended by staff at this time for your approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
No.
If there is no discussion or any questions, motions in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us going with ZMA twenty-three dash zero one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an annual amendment to the zoning map. We take the previous year's annexations and zonings, put them on the map, and re-adopted. With that, this is the second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the last reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy on the zoning map? If there's none, I'll open up a public hearing for ZMA twenty-three dash zero one. Anybody wish to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for ZMA twenty-three dash zero one, and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Good answer. Good answer. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. T twenty-three dash zero three, Mr. Menino, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is actually twenty-six amendments to our current zoning ordinance in order to comply with the state legislature's adopted changes to the zoning procedures law. City Attorney went through our ordinance and made the changes that are necessary for that compliance. With that, we did take it to the Planning Commission. They have recommended approval, and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item? Thank you, sir. And I will open up a public hearing for T twenty-three dash zero three. Anybody wish to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T twenty-three dash zero three, and turn it over to council for any other questions, discussions, or motions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. One more time for you, Randy.
Thank you.
Getting your up downs in here.
This will be my last time. This is our annual software, annual amendment, our annual software maintenance agreement with that. The price is now twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. It is a budgeted item. It did go up nine percent since last year's fee.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy? Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Dixon, you have a handful this evening as well. Actually, just a couple. Good ones, though.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The gas system is requesting the purchase of thirty-three hundred feet of steel pipe for the Great Valley Parkway extension. Three bids were requested, but only two were submitted. Erby Utilities of Kennesaw, Georgia submitted a low bid of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. This is a budgeted item. Council's approval is recommended.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Michael.
Yes, sir. This is a natural, natural gas service agreement that has been negotiated with S.K. Battery America Incorporated, outlining the terms of natural gas service for their facility. Their usage is anticipated to ramp up over the next seven years to a total of eleven thousand decathems per day by two thousand twenty-three. Their maximum usage at that time would be equivalent to the city's overall natural gas consumption on a cool day in the month of February. The gas system anticipates that system improvements totaling approximately ten million dollars will be necessary to serve this volume. Under the terms of the agreement, S.K. America Incorporated has agreed to pay a minimum monthly bill for its natural gas usage over the course of seven years, or until the city has recuperated its capital outlay, whichever occurs first. The gas system anticipates the capital outlay to be recuperated within five years, depending on actual cost of natural gas. S.K. has executed the agreement. It's been accepted by the city attorney's office, and council's approval is recommended for the city to enter into this agreement.
Thank you. Make any comment.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Michael Dixon and Brian Friary have done a tremendous job, as well as Keith reviewing his contractors. There's a lot of back and forth with our Korean counterparts, but they've done, been very professional, very courteous to them, and basically shared with them our costs, and I appreciate all the work you guys put into this. And I know it's a long, long road, but obviously, it's been a big day for Cartesville, so I appreciate everything you guys have done to make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael. Dan, you've got the next one.
Yes, sir. The first one is amendment to the one-seventy-eight West Main Street Property Sale and Concept Plan. As we discussed in the work session, I would just ask for approval of the resolution, just for the, basically to approval of the one-seventy-eight property sale, changing from J.B. Henderson to Womack Brothers LLC. That would be the approval of that resolution. Everything in the contract will stay the same, just change of the actual buyer.
Okay. Any questions on this item or discussion needed? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve the amendment for the one-seventy-eight West Main Street property change to Womack Brothers as the buyers.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Chief Carter, you're up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight, first of all, the annual purchase award for Fire Department Physicals for our firefighters. This is through Site Med of Kennesaw. They also provide us annual comprehensive physicals to cover all the different aspects of firefighting, and also through the year, they give us medical support for clearance of our firefighters if they're injured. Meets NFPA nineteen eighty-two. For hazardous material members, it also meets all the OSHA guidelines, all this particular lab testing. The annual cost this year is twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, which is up four percent over last year, but it is a budgeted item. All services and invoices will be completed and turned in by December the fifteenth.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments for the chief? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The Fire Department expects to request approval of the annual renewal for our vector solutions. And this is a cloud-based software that is a record management software for our training, supplies, and all of our equipment. The cost of this renewal is eleven thousand and six dollars, and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Hampton, your turn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item, I believe, is, yes, this is the MV ninety upgrade we're requesting authorization for. This is our software we use to help do the billing for our large industrial customers. It gets our hourly data that we need to perform their billing. This is a software version that we have now is becoming obsolete. They will no longer support it, so we have no choice. They kind of actually dragged it out for us because we needed to wait until this budgeted. But the amount is eight thousand six hundred and two dollars. It is from Mytron, it's a sole source thing, and it's a budgeted expense.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Okay. Next item is, we're also requesting authorization to purchase a pallet of two-S meters, which is our standard two-hundred amp meters, residential meters. This is just some meters to have in stock for day-to-day operations. We're requesting these from the Equipment Controls Company that we're currently buying meters from for the AMI project we're underway. The total price for the two-hundred and twenty-four meters is thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, and it is a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Foyle, you've got the next two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Public Works Wheel excavator encountered some issues that prevented the swing arm of the excavator not to move. After inspection by a tractor and equipment company of Calhoun, Georgia, it was determined that the swing transmission would need to be replaced. This repair was completed in order to utilize this piece of equipment on an active job. The cost of repair was twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-six cents, which was less than the proposed cost of repair. Public Works requests approval of this invoice from TEC. The repair will be paid from our maintenance of vehicle and equipment budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, Steve.
Okay. Next item. City of Carisville currently has several quotes to purchase a, I'll just say, flash and beacon. It's technically a rectangular rapid flash and beacon, RRFB, through a Georgia Department of Transportation L-MIG Safety Action Program grant to install in an existing crosswalk. The Georgia Department of Transportation has notified the City of Carisville Public Works that we have been awarded up to sixty-eight hundred dollars. We're requesting council's approval to allow this, allow Public Works to purchase a flash and beacon system to install at the existing crosswalk crossing Pine Grove Road at the Dillinger Park main entrance. The lowest and best quote for this flash and beacon is from Southern Lighting and traffic for nine thousand fifty dollars. We are requesting that council approve this purchase of the flash and beacon with cost and miscellaneous materials not to exceed nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Seventy percent of this cost will be reimbursed through the grant aforementioned. This is not a budgeted item, but will be paid by the twenty-twenty SPOS funds.
Mr. Mayor came from a request from Councilman Roth and actually from the citizens. Obviously, if you drive down Pine Grove, you need to see the number of people that walk across there, and sometimes traffic does not stop for them, so it's recommended for your approval.
And I would also say, you know, a couple of years ago, the electric department put in a brighter light streetlight there at that crosswalk, and that really helped a lot at night, but I know that that street can, and we've taken some pine trees down there at the entrance for better visual sight. I appreciate Parks and Rec Director Steve Roberts doing that. And so I think that helps, and these will also help in the safety of that crosswalk that's there that gets used quite often, and so I appreciate you working on getting this going.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Steve. Dan, you've got the next couple, sir.
Yes. The next one is surplus donation. So the City of Taylorville reached out for this tar kettle trailer that we've had. We're going to put on Gov. deals. Obviously, to me, it was better to donate to them, to a needy city that obviously needs something like that. It does need some work on igniters, so I recommend approval of this donation of this piece of equipment.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the donation to the City of Taylorville.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Next item is water sewer bond reimbursement. As we recall, a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, Weedleman and Singleton, you approved that contract with them for engineering work for potential water and sewer bond issue for expansion of the treatment plant and eventually the pollution control plant. This will allow us to get reimbursed for those engineering fees going forward, and any other costs associated before we issue actual revenue bonds sometime next year. So I recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Roberts, your turn.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is to renew our program provider contracts. It is for Little League, Carisville Little League, which does youth baseball, Southern Soccer Academy, which does their youth soccer in camps, Top Chef Concession, which is one of our concession, or the only concession provider we have, and Wire to Wire, which provides running clubs. Top Chef will be a fifteen percent monthly revenue, and Wire to Wire will give twenty-five percent of their gross monthly revenue, and non-resident fee will be paid fully to the city. I do look for approval.
Just to clarify the Top Chef.
Well, I guess it's really not anything voted on, but yeah.
The Top Chef one you're asking for is due to end this calendar year, twelve thirty-one.
The Top Chef, yes, I'm sorry. We did. We are running that one through December thirty-first. The timeframe works better for Parks and Rec during that time. If we wanted to make a switch, it'd be a lot easier to make that switch than in July, when we're right in the middle of our pool season.
Okay. Thank you. So if a motion would be made that would at least note that change, since that's different than the documentation we have on the original agenda, is there any questions or discussions on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve with the amendment to the Top Chef.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item, please, Steve.
At the Senior Aquatic Center, we did have a pump and a heat exchange go out. The quoted for parts and service for the heat exchange was eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that was by Arrow Mechanical. And the, to rebuild the pump, was forty-seven sixty-five, and that was also by Arrow Mechanical. It is not a budgeted item, but we do have that in our maintenance account, so I would recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Beck, your turn. First timer? You done this? Second time, that's right. That was the week I wasn't here.
I'm not going to, I don't want to relive the first time.
Do we need to go into the line item discussion again?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so the first item that we have is a one-thousand horsepower motor for number three, high-service pump at the water treatment plant. It's giving us some high-temperature alarms, and we suspect a faulty temperature sensor is the cause, but the pump has to be taken out of service and taken to the shop to be disassembled and inspected. As this pump is vital for operating during the warmer months, we have requested quotes from Coal Technology for a turnkey motor repair. We received the quotes for a recondition, a rewind, and/or a new motor, but we expect it to only be the recondition. However, we are recommending a approval of not to exceed of sixty-five thousand dollars, just in case. It does have to be the rewind cost. This is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next one, Brett.
The second item that we have is the actuator for our number three final clarifier sludge valve needs to be replaced. We received quotes for the replacement, including the installation and the calibration. We are recommending the low bid of twelve thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eight cents by Georgia Western, including the four-week lead time for material be approved, and this item is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Last one, Brett.
The last item that we have is just material stock for our water distribution and collections warehouse. We are recommending the award to purchase the items to the low bidder of consolidated pipe and supply for sixteen thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents, and this is a budgeted item.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Time for the Stephen Greer Show.
It's quality time tonight.
That's right.
Good evening. This first item is a request to purchase a new IP phone system that will replace the current phone system that was installed back in two thousand seventeen. The current system was discontinued, end of sale, end of life already by the manufacturer, so the new system will give us some features we don't have. Total amount is one hundred and two thousand six hundred and thirteen forty cents from CMP Technologies. This is a budgeted item and to be funded by the two thousand twenty SPOS, and I recommend this for your approval.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next one, please.
This is a budgeted annual support renewal for our Laserfish document imaging system. It's a cloud-based system we use for all of our document management. Total amount is nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars from MCCI, and it's recommended for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
This item is the construction and installation of a fiber pathway to be built into the new Advocates for Children on Joe Frank Harris Parkway. Total amount is eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty and seventy-three cents from NCI. A portion of this install is going to be paid by the customer. This is not a budgeted item, but this is a two thousand twenty SPOS, and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
This next item is the request to purchase security cameras and license plate readers for Dillinger Park entrances and the entrance to the Pine Mountain Trail parking lot. This is also includes additional parking lot cameras for Dillinger Park tennis area and basketball court parking. This is fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars from Vicon. This is not a budgeted item, but will be funded by the two thousand twenty SPOS, and I recommend this for your approval.
I should have asked this in the work session, perhaps, but the other, like the baseball complex and the league field areas, are those things that we've maybe perhaps discussed maybe doing in the future years?
We can. We can absolutely look into it.
Well, I'll leave that up to the Recreation Department to decide if they're needing or wanting.
Yeah, this is what we were approached, yeah, we were approached, or Chief McCann approached the rec department when Tom Gilling was here, and then, and then we got involved. But this, like I said, the license plate reader was an idea we kicked around years ago, but we had to wait until the technology caught up for digital cameras.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. CD server hardware update.
Yeah, this is a, this is a request to purchase new servers for our virtual hardware, our virtual server system that we bought in two thousand seventeen. This is on about a five-year refresh cycle for us. They're used for providing our financial system and all of our applications for city users. Total amount is seventy-eight thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty-two cents from Fiber Store. This is a budgeted item, and it is a two thousand twenty SPOS also, and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
This is a software purchase for the hardware from the previous item. This is the software that makes our virtualization work and the software that's used to back up all of our city data. Total amount is fifty-three thousand sixty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents from CDWG. It is a budgeted item, two thousand twenty SPOS, and we recommend this for your approval.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
This next item is the fiber pathway installation for Q cells on Great Valley Parkway. This is to provide our FibroCom internet service for Q cells and the adjacent construction trailer city area. Total amount is eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and forty cents from NCI. Not a budgeted item, but this is two thousand and twenty SPOS, and we recommend this for your approval.
You mentioned the work session. I think people want to hear the approximate payback time for, I said approximate, when I hold you to...
Approximate's two years. It just depends on how many construction trailers we serve. We've already got several, two or three rolling in, so there should be even more. Plus the, plus the Q cells has got, you know, a fair amount of bandwidth, so I would say two years or less.
He's already, you're already signed engineering firm out there.
Oh, there he is.
We've got several contracts already for the construction trailer and several more coming in, and Q cells themselves will likely have a construction trailer circuit, too, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other...
I'm sorry, this is, this is what Victor asked earlier in the work session. Basically, these are the customers Steve's already got, basically, for the investment that Mayor and Council approved several years ago to get out to the industrial park. We had it passed by Gredal to, you know, get out that way, so you can see where he's picked up a number of customers for the payback on the investment to get out to Highland Seventy-Five, so.
Yep. If you build it, they will come, right?
Hope so.
Just head on up to Dalt.
Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item.
Last one. This item is the support renewal for our Office three-sixty-five software for all of the city end-users. This is what we use for our office productivity, email communications, and system security. The total is eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, sixty-eight cents from CDWG. This is a budgeted item, and we recommend this for your approval.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Jay, say it. Thirty items in twenty-nine minutes, that ain't too bad, is it?
That's pretty good.
That's good.
Good thing we don't have one of those consent agendas, we're not making five matters.
And again, we, we take an awful lot of time and effort on the front end, and then during our work session, ironing out, so these meetings go a little bit, a little bit more expeditiously. Is there anybody wishing to step forward to make comment? Now would be the time to do so. Step forward, please, sir, and when you do, I'll need you, when you get up here to the microphone, I'll need you to give your name and your address so that our clerk can record that into the minutes, okay? You just adjust that microphone however you need it to be.
Oh, yeah. No number there. Okay. Mayor and council, my name is Gary Palmer. I reside at twenty-eight Ridgeview Drive, Carersville, three oh one two oh. I was, I was here before they had zip codes, but I, I was born nineteen forty-six in the hospital, about where that water line's going now, that, then raised on, on Gilmer Street. Went to the Grand Theater when it's fifteen cents, and you can get a Babe Ruth candy bar for five cents, all those things, but, and I stayed in this town till eighteen years old, came back with family in tow twenty years later, and I love this town. The amenities, the things around us, absolutely amazing. Everything here. Logan, I don't guess you've got a copy of that display window, have you? You all know what I'm talking about, too, don't you? It's burned in my, it's etched in my memory right now. You guys know what I'm talking about. Everybody's walked down that sidewalk there, sometimes with your children. They, one of the establishments to the right of that, they're hurting right now because this should not happen. This should not happen. We left the door open somewhere. I say we. I mean, I should be a more informed citizen. I need to be. I need to start paying more attention to what's around us. Our moral compass is being hurt by what's happened with that. I heard something about a specialty store, whatever they call this thing over there. I think it's called general merchandise. Nobody really saw what was happening there. I'm not going in there to find out either, but I'll tell you one story. On July the fourth, I go to the parade, come down, and I say, well, I'm gonna walk down that way and go get a free hot dog at the, at the Friendship, and this couple was getting out of the car, right, right about where that, that display window's right behind me there, and he gets out, and the, the wife, and we talk a little, and he says, "That," he points at, he said, "I came from Pennsylvania to come to Carersville so that I didn't have to deal with this stuff anymore." That's what he said. Now, our tourism, our, all of the great things we have in this square right here, the amenities of the rivers and the mountains, all but right now, the reason I said where I am, you know, I'm a native of this area in Carersville, is my home. That shouldn't happen. I, I felt like I heard something about maybe adult entertainment, and so y'all are working on some things right now. I'd like to be a part of that, too, but the thing is, you guys, you have a lot going here, a lot of great things. We don't need to let that be.